Hello, I'm Becky Veevey. I'm the Bureau Chief at Chalk Beach, Chicago. And welcome to our inaugural School Board Candidate Forums. These are conversations with the people running in Chicago's historic first school board elections. Welcome to anyone here tuning in live on YouTube. If you have any questions for the candidates tonight, please type them into the comments and we will do our best to get to them. We are very, very happy to welcome the candidates of District 7 this evening. Yessenia Lopez is an executive assistant at the Illinois Secretary of State and a graduate of CPS Schools, Pickard Elementary and Juarez Community Academy. She's a volunteer at Tepo Chakali, Salsedo, Juarez, and Spry Schools, and the former Latino Outreach Director with JB for Governor. Also, we have Ava Villalobos tonight. Ava's a stay-at-home mom of four who formerly worked in accounting. She is also a CPS graduate and sends her children to a local Catholic school. Previously, she worked in, at an international real estate firm. We also invited Raquel Dawn tonight, but she couldn't make it. She is the third candidate on the ballot in District 7. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you so much for being here. So, we're going to start off with a little bit of an icebreaker tonight. And we've asked all the candidates this week this question, and we've gotten some really fun answers. So, what was your favorite and least favorite subject in school growing up? We'll start with Yessenia.
Thank you again for having us this evening. Oh, that's a little bit difficult to answer on the spot, but I'll say my favorite subject has to be social studies. It, for me, has always been very interesting, learning the history, especially of our communities. Having gone to Benito Juarez has a very rich history that parents organize in order to get the high school built. And it helping me inform about some of the areas that need improvement overall, including equitable approach. The least favorite, I would say math. And it's something that I learned to appreciate while I was studying at DePaul, of all things, and also later on in my career, because we need math for everything, and especially when it comes to making sure that whether it be meeting the numbers or just everyday tasks.
How about you, Ava? What was your favorite and least favorite?
Well, I had two favorite ones, which were art and math. Art, I feel that it opens up your mind to, you know, thinking upside the box. I work with all medias across the board. And math, you know, my, numbers tell a story, and there's nothing that can be hidden from them. There's so much beauty in numbers. I sound like a dork, but it's fine. And, you know, I did do accounting, and I love, you know, everything that you can learn just from, you know, looking at numbers. My least favorite one was ELA, only because that was my second language. And I did not get the adequate way of learning how to really do the whole writing part of it, so I did struggle with that part. And believe it or not, I did learn to appreciate it more now that I'm older, once I started to learn some of those rules through my daughters as I was teaching, helping them do their homework.
Okay, well, we'll get to a question about bilingual education later today. So, obviously, there's been a lot of news in the Chicago Public Schools in recent months, certainly in the past week, the school board itself, with the resignation of school board members and the appointments of some new members. We would like to ask all of the candidates a set of yes/no questions related to some of the issues at stake here. So, if elected to the board, yes or no, I will ask you to go down the line. And you will get 30 seconds to explain your answers, but let's go through these two questions first. Yes or no, would you keep Pedro Martinez in the role of CPS CEO? Yessenia?
Yes.
Ava? And yes or no, do you support taking out a high-interest loan to cover operating costs at the school district? Yessenia?
No.
No, definitely no.
Okay. So, you each get 30 seconds to explain your answer, and we'll start with Ava.
For which one?
Either one. You get time to explain why you said...
You know, he is having a stronger track record where he has been incrementing and getting better resources to the schools. Are we where we need to be at? No, but we are moving in that direction. I think that he has been very strong in making sure that we are all moving there. And, you know, they did implement a new plans. And as far as the loan numbers, it just doesn't make sense. We're already up at a deficit. Taking a high-interest loan is not going to solve us. It's going to put us in a bigger pickle in three years from now when we're trying to figure out how to make up for that and still request additional funds for whatever other issues we might be having then.
Yessenia, how about you? Would you elaborate on your answers?
Definitely. Given the information that I have, I, you know, I don't have the briefings that the current board members have received, pretty much going based on the articles from the media. That's pretty much what's guiding right now my responses with Pedro Martinez, also a Juarez alum. By the way, we've seen leadership, right? And it's important to have stability for our students. And so, for me, we'll be evaluating very more closely what is his track record and also center on his goals for student achievement. When it comes to the loan, we've seen already what has happened when there are high-risk with the loan interest and the negative impact that it will have, that has had in our city. And that is, again, what's guiding me based on what I've read, that at the moment, I will vote a no on that.
Okay. I want to dig into CPS leadership a little bit, and you both reflected on Pedro Martinez specifically. But as a school board, you will have the opportunity to hire, evaluate, and fire the future CEO or future CEOs down the line, depending on how many terms you serve. I'd like to start with Yessenia. What qualities or experience would you like to see a CPS CEO have? What are specific qualities you think that they need to have?
I think it's important that our CEO is trustworthy, that is community-driven, and understands the needs of the students as well, and transparent, in order for us to be able to build that relationship.
How about you, Ava? What qualities would you like to see?
Definitely transparency, making sure that, you know, there's accountability as well. You know, we need, especially in our district, you know, it's heavily Latino. We need to make sure that whoever is ahead of the CPS is also in tune with the community and listening to the parents, and most importantly, listening to the wants and needs of the students.
Do either of you believe it's important for the CPS CEO to be an educator or to have been a teacher at any point?
I wouldn't say necessarily a teacher per se, but involved with community in some kind of level. And, you know, having a good, strong professional background that can, you know, he can really, is able to use in that leadership.
Okay. Yessenia?
I wouldn't say required, but it's definitely a plus. It will help to understand how the system operates, some of the obstacles that our current educators are facing, and also on the administrative side. But I think what it's also in a free here is the community, that is community-driven and understands also the families.
Right. So, I want to move on to budget. There's a few budget questions I have, and I'm going to start with a couple of yes or no questions. And we'll start first with yes or no. Do you think that the state of Illinois should provide Chicago Public Schools with more funding? Yes or no, Ava?
At the moment, I want to say no, only because there seems to be a lot of cracks in the system where we don't know specifically where the money is really going. We get a lot of just broad descriptions of them, and I don't feel that it's right for us to be requesting more money from taxpayers and to just keep on increasing that demand. I think the first thing is focusing on where we're actually spending this money, having some good third-party audit and focusing on that, making sure the money is being put to good use before we ask for more.
Yessenia, how about you?
I, for me, is yes. I think those things should also pay its fair share. That being said, also doing, doing an efficiency within Chicago Public Schools, figure out what areas that need to, that we might need to redirect money. But keep in mind that we're not cutting essential services or programs that will have a negative impact in our families.
As a follow-up to that, could you each talk to me about how you would go about working with state and other elected officials to get additional support for CPS? And we'll start with Yessenia, since you did say yes. So, how would you work with lawmakers at the state level?
I think a lot of that is leveraging and building on relationships, right? We got to continue building on those relationships, not just with those stakeholders that are from Chicago, but general assembly, right? We have individuals from central, downstate Illinois. And for them, being able to tell the story of why this is important and the positive impact, not just for Chicago, but the state. In my case, I've done that work in different roles I've had, and I'm able to, because of my established relationships, be able to, you know, continue building on that. And that is at the state level. Looking at the federal level, also in congressional, we already get some federal funding, right? Whether it be for after-school programming or some for the low-income communities. And it's what other areas can be leveraged and looked into. I will also even expand and say, outside of government, let's look at partnerships with philanthropy, with nonprofit sector where I've been involved in, with the Pochacali, where we've been able to bring in after-school programming for the kids and families using those relationships.
Okay. And Ava, how about you? I know you said no to the state funding, but how would you work with state lawmakers?
I wasn't saying no to the state funding at the moment. You know, I would look into it, but first, my focus will be to see where this money is actually going and make sure that we are accounting and being responsible with the funds. But I would be looking into establishing those relationships on the state and federal level as well. And similar to her, I would also be looking into working with nonprofits. There is a lot of other organizations, you know, that are very much an asset in our community, and they, we can also leverage with them to be able to help us with some of this without having to always impacting the CPS budget all the time. There's other ways to be able to have other funds coming in. And then we can also look in the marketing side of stuff. We are able to have some other ways where each school independently is able to provide some other way where the community can come in there and invest in the school through some other types of events, games, you know. There's, sky's the limit. We can go ahead and make sure that everybody is involved, present, and that, you know, we're responsible with that money.
In the most recent budget, Chicago Public Schools included a forecast for the next five years, looking at its budgetary picture. It essentially projects a $500 million deficit every year for the next five, effectively a structural deficit. And that's before any negotiated costs related to teacher or principal union contracts. Given that that would be the deficit you'll be facing if elected and stepping into office, how would you want to see the budget balanced in the next five years? We'll start with Ava.
I mean, that's quite a tough question. You know, there is, I know TIPS has been a thing where it has been veered money away from our schools. And we do have TIPS that will be sunsetting, I believe, in 2034. Those are funds that, you know, we can go ahead and leverage on and be able to put to work where they're really needed at. And, you know, just being responsible and also having that transparency with our community, where we're also listening to where they're needing more the support. And, you know, working on the state level and the federal level where we are putting the money and not keep on repeating the same mistakes, or we're asking for loans or stopping putting money towards pensions or other things that are really needing. We need to make sure that we are preparing and not being reactive to problems and start setting a better, stronger stepping stone for years to come.
Yessenia, how about you? How would you manage that deficit?
One of the things, and this more the approach of me having served in other boards locally, also state and nationally. As a board member, one of the main responsibilities is being physically responsible, right? And also being strategic. Now, going year by year, but let's look at long-term, five years from now, 10 years from now. Some of right now, the issues, this is something that should have been planned for. ARPA funds, we knew those were going to be done at the end of this year.
ARPA is the COVID, federal COVID dollars, just to clarify for anyone watching.
Which we definitely have been helpful, not just to CPS, but every level of government. But we know it's going to have an impact, right? And it's looking at first doing on what is being effective and what do we, as mentioned before, what do we need to move around? And then leveraging some of the already current relationships that we have within philanthropy. I mentioned non-for-profit, especially nonprofit that might do the after-school programming, or our health with therapy that we know it's need, especially in the 7th district. So, I think it's a lot of those relationships, looking, this board will need to focus on the short term right now, but also on the long term, so we leave the CPS in a good, healthy, financially healthy way.
Position, okay. Another issue that has been a big topic of conversation in the recent weeks and months has been, and it's connected to the loan. So, this is whether or not the city should pick up part of the cost of non-teacher pensions. So, you've maybe, you know, heard people reference that $175 million payment. Do you believe that the city should pick that up again? Or should the school district continue picking that up as it has since 2020, when Lightfoot shifted it to the school district? We'll start with Yessenia.
Yes, I believe that they should be able, part of it, be able to pick it up and be able to help with the Chicago Public Schools, because again, of the impact that it has, the positive impact of not just the educators, but the staff that provide that assistance to students and to the families. So, yes.
Okay. So, you think it should be shared between the school district and the city?
Correct.
Okay. And how about you, Ava?
I would have to look more in-depth in it, but at the moment, the information that I've come across, I feel that there should be some other state help, because the city does help, the state does help, the capital a lot. And I feel that, you know, our Chicago residents already take a big burden in covering so many other things. So, I can't honestly say yes or no, but I do think that the state should also be able to help with this, considering that it is a pension. We do have statewide pension for teachers as well that are outside of the city. So, maybe we can see if we can look into that avenue.
Okay. We're going to move on to school choice, which has been also, in the last year, a big topic of conversation. Chicago Public Schools, this will start with a yes or no. Do you believe any of Chicago Public Schools' current admissions policies should change? Yessenia, yes or no?
Yes.
Ava, do you believe any of them should change? The policies for...
I'm trying to think of specific ones, so I...
Admissions for selective enrollment or the magnet lotteries?
No.
Okay. So, could you elaborate? Why do you think they should change? And then you'll have a chance to say why you think they should stay the same. Why do you think they should change, Yessenia?
I think we need to just take another look and see how can we make them more inclusive and equitable. We do have some amazing selective enrollment magnet schools, some that are well-known across the country. But it's how do we make sure that they're inclusive? So, I think that's the approach that I will take.
And how about you, Ava? What do you think should stay the same?
I said no in the sense that I know that there is the idea of getting rid of selective enrollment. And, you know, I know that there's higher requirements for that. And with me saying no, it's in that sense that I don't want to be able to get rid of that, only because there are some kids that need that extra push, that they are looking, that they are more academically inclined. But, you know, we also should continue supporting our other kids who are suffering academically and be able to support them in other ways.
This is a question about charter schools. That's obviously another form of choice in the school system that Chicago has. The Chicago Board of Education authorizes charter schools to open and to be renewed and continue to exist. In recent months, the Board of Education, recent years, I should say, they have taken steps to end charter school contracts when those schools are not performing well or have had financial troubles. This most recently happened with Urban Prep. You may have seen that in the news. Are you in favor, as a board member, would you be in favor of ending charter school agreements, even if that means that effectively that school might close and those students would have to go elsewhere? We'll start with Ava.
My main thing as a board member is not to go and try closing a school. It's more to work with them, figure out which other ways we're able to better support them, regardless of whether they're a charter school or not. We do have traditional local schools that are also underperforming, and yet, this is not a thing that I want to even bring on the table either. You know, all of our kids, regardless of what kind of school they attend to, they deserve our full support. And, you know, we should be able to listen to the parents and support the parents with their decision of what school they have selected for their child.
Okay. And Yessenia, how about you? Would you be in favor of ending charter school agreements if they're not performing well or financially having trouble?
Closing schools, we've seen that in previous administrations, negative impact that had primarily in the black and brown communities. We don't need a repeat of that. So, we need to look at, see, how can we help support them? Charter schools, there's a large number of charter schools in the 7th district. Families need to be served. Students need to be served. While they are receiving public funding so they can run privately, I say, you know, we got to hold them accountable, right? As we hold our Chicago community schools. But also, support the staff and help them to be a union, or to help support bringing whatever it is that they need. But I am against closing schools.
Okay, got it. Moving on to equity, we have seen, and this, I think that we'll have a good conversation here, because I know this is an issue in the 7th district. There's been an uptick in English learners across the district. A lot of this is due to an influx of new arrivals, new migrant students. And there are a lot of cases in which these students are entering schools that do not have bilingual staff, do not have bilingual support, or the staff is not certified to teach a bilingual program. As a board member, what do you see as a short-term solution to help those English learners immediately? And then we'll get to long-term solutions as well, but let's talk about the short term, because you can't just hire somebody in a minute. So, we'll start with Yessenia on this one.
It's definitely figure out how do we can fast-track some of the certificates that are needed. We know that there's a lot, and I have spoken to teachers and also community members at the doors, that they want to be able, how can they be of support to the families? So, how can we help them in the short term, right? The certificates that they need, going back into the nonprofit services that maybe we can bring into the school to help. I've seen that with some of the organizations in the Little Village area where I've been involved, where we provide the ESL classes, not just for the student, but also for the parent after school or in the mornings, to help support the entire family and their needs. It's working at the state level, right? With the different partnerships, whether it be ISB or other agency, and how we can partner up and help resolve some of these issues. Long-term, looking at incentives, because we know that there's also a shortage. Overall, not just in education, but overall, finding individuals that are bilingual. And not just bilingual, I will say, but it's important to be culturally sensitive, given everything, you know, that the families are going through. And I'm definitely grateful that we live in a city and a state that is welcoming. And now, let's put that, what we say welcoming, into action.
All right, Ava, how about you?
Working with nonprofits, but also being able to work directly with schools, colleges, universities, students that are already looking into those careers. We should be able to partner with them, provide some kind of internship, low-cost, maybe stipend, where, you know, they're getting the experience, the hands-on, and then we're also, you know, not acquiring a high cost. Non-for-profits will help with making sure that our students have that connection. You know, just because you speak Spanish, it doesn't mean that you understand the culture. You know, culture varies by region, not just in Mexico, but, you know, Latin America, you know. And we want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable with who they're speaking with, and that the lingo, you know, it's understandable, because some of the verbiage that we use in certain regions is not the same way that you would express it on another country or other regions within Mexico as well.
I want to talk about staffing shortages. First, let's talk about staffing shortages. This relates to bilingual certified educators. I heard both of you touch on working with maybe local universities or certification programs. Could you elaborate on what you envision as a sort of, something a board of ed could implement to help solve that staffing shortage for bilingual educators specifically? And we'll start with Ava.
Yeah, similar to my prior response, you know, working with our local universities and colleges, where we're able to create, you know, a hands-on program, similarly with what we already do with, I know, like Cristo Rey and some other high schools, where they take you to offices for them to gain that already experience. We can go ahead and start tailoring these smaller programs for students who are already looking into being educators and for the ones that are focused in the language, making sure that, you know, we can partner with them. It seems like a very simple and more quicker solution without having to overanalyze it and then go into more difficult hurdles.
Yessenia, how about you? How would you solve the bilingual staffing shortages?
They had it mentioned, looking at the short term and long term. Short term is working with ISB and other agencies, and also statewide organizations that work primarily with current students that want to go into education, and also some of the incentives, right? What it is that we are able, want to attract, but also maintain those individuals, because we're going to need them not just right now, but also looking ahead. And also, speaking from like, you know, my own experience having worked inside some of these schools, where oftentimes, I was the one tasked with being the translator, whether it be a difficult meeting the teacher was having with the parent, or also between a parent and just asking a simple question about the academic status of their child.
That's a lot to ask of a teacher who's maybe not being paid to be the translator, right? Let's talk about another area where there is a lot of staffing shortages. So, in Chicago Public Schools, the district has struggled to serve students with disabilities. First, one of the areas where they've struggled, and this is not about staffing shortages, but I do want to get this question in, is that they have had a hard time getting students with disabilities on bus rides, getting them transportation to and from school. We've heard stories of students waiting four weeks to get a bus route to school. And of course, they can't learn or get services until they're in school. As a board member, what would you like to see be a solution to that transportation of students with disabilities crisis that we're seeing? Ava, we'll start with you.
I would like to partner with the city on this one, making sure that we're able to work with these businesses that provide this type of avenue for kids to get to work. We need to consider benefits for these workers. A lot of times, they don't work a full-time hours, you know. So, you know, that is a thing that we need to consider, that they have a health thing to be concerned for. We need to provide them some other types of incentives, of making sure that they stay for a longer term, not just for a school year. And just finding better ways where we can increase their morale as well, and they can feel supportive and heard.
And how about you, Yessenia?
We know that nationally, we're facing a bus driver shortage. So, it's not just unique to Chicago Public Schools. That being said, is looking at the short term, right? What are some of those solutions in maintaining what is more efficient, but also the safety for our students? I know at least, working with Secretary of State, we now have our CDL classes in Spanish, or sorry, our booklets in Spanish, and the written test in Spanish for the first time. And we just rolled this out over the summer.
For the CDL license, which is what a bus driver would need.
Exactly. So, it's thinking of like, different agencies, where each step, and where we can repartner and change things to help bring in maybe new individuals that might be interested. And we know CDL test, it's not the most quick, easy test to do. But I just bring that as an example, right? The other is looking also to see what we can do with our service within the community. I know they, it's almost like, similar to a bus pool, looking how efficient it has been. Is it something that we need to expand upon or not? At the doors, I'm thinking in particular, there's a story with a mom that she mentioned in the Southwest Side. Her student, who is autistic, she learned that he had been transferred to a school in the North Side, because the school no longer could meet his, what he needed. And she's almost crying, telling me, "I don't have a car. How am I going to take my child all the way to the North Side? It's been already three weeks into the school, and he's missing out on essential services that he needs," right? And it's thinking about these families that are impacted by this, and what can we do as a community, and also work with our, whether it be legislators or other agencies, to get a solution.
Okay, all right. Well, I hope that that solution comes to that mom soon, because that's very difficult. We also see staffing shortages in the classroom when it comes to special education. You guys both touched on licensure for bilingual educators, but what would you like to see in terms of helping recruit more teachers to become special education teachers? And we'll start with Yessenia this time.
The same way, I think it's somewhat tied to the Spanish bilingual educators. And it's the essence, one, looking about the incentives, because we know their caseload, it is very large. it is very large. What are the support systems they need in place to help them? Also, of course, the pay, what it is necessary there. This is something that is very dear to me because I have a nephew who now is 11 years old. He's autistic. We've seen firsthand some of those limitations, starting, he attends a Chicago Public School. The language barrier. My mom is the one that picks him up and drops him off, and she primarily speaks Spanish. So we were able to transfer him to a different school because it has better services to meet his specific needs, right? So thinking of what we went through in the hurdles that many other families are going through, and also the conversations with the teachers, right? What it is that we can do to help support them so they can be successful in the classroom.
Ava, how about you?
So continued evaluations for our kids. And, you know, we always talk about supporting them and bringing, you know, a lot more resources for them. But we also need to make sure that we focus back on the teacher too, to make sure that the teacher has the tools that is being constantly, you know, reevaluated. And also the tools, you know, they're being enforced every month, you know? Making sure whatever new little approaches that might be working, you know? There's so much data available, we're able to implement it. And, you know, I've seen the struggle myself firsthand. I myself have a child with an IEP, and just trying to navigate that whole system, it's almost nearly impossible. And if, you know, the language barrier itself, it poses a whole nother problem. And, you know, just being able to facilitate those and be able to do continuous training to the teachers, to assistant teachers, you know? Teacher alone cannot do this. They need to make sure that they have the support. And we need to be able to continuously train and prepare them every month to make sure that, you know, that they're not feeling exhausted, that, you know, that they also feel like they can decompress, because it is overwhelming. It is very much overwhelming. And I say this on the angle of a mom. I love my children, but, you know, it can be overwhelming as well. And, you know, be able to provide them the safe space with also the children. You know, the children need that safe space, and so does the person that's conducting the classroom.
I want to move on to facilities and infrastructure. This is an issue that the district has faced. Although there have been some modest enrollment increases in the last two years, the overall number of students still is dramatically lower than it was a decade ago. We have schools serving a fraction of the students they once did. That makes it very hard for schools to provide a full slate of programs and support. As a board member, how do you see CPS, how do you think CPS should balance its current enrollment across the district with the hundreds of buildings it also needs to operate and maintain? And we'll start with Ava.
I think, one, we can start with assessing the buildings, making sure that they are providing more state-of-the-art and ADA compliancy so that more kids feel included and they don't have to go outside of their neighborhood. And two, I think changing the perception and employee morale is a big one. A parent did share the story that she was having problems at their local traditional school. And when it took a lot of tries to try to get this resolved and it didn't happen, went to the office, said, "I'm going to move my child." They said, "Yeah, we understand." Instead of trying to, you know, keep them, retain them, where's that sense of pride? Where's that sense of, "Let's address this." And, you know, and have that school spirit. You know, we need to change that morale. We need to, it needs to start within our staff, within our leadership, if we want to make sure that our kids are happy also within that building.
Yesenia, how about you? Balancing facilities with enrollment?
Especially infrastructure, having just a safe space where a student can learn. It's one of the, you know, important things. How can a child be paying attention when water is leaking into the classroom, right? It's looking, you know, let's have a list, what are the ones that need immediate, right-away repairs? And looking across the district, I know in 7th District, some of our schools have been there for a large number of years. They definitely need repairs and updates. Some are beautiful, beautiful, you know, school buildings and very historic, but how can we maintain them, right? So also looking into partnerships with environmental work and grants. How can we bring in that money to make them more environmentally, but also helping with the cost? I'm thinking of when I was a student, I remember Juarez, this is before they had the Annex Building, a beautiful Annex Building, and now soccer field. We, our gym, we knew that if it was raining the day of or the night before, we were not going to be having gym class because the wooden floor, water will leak in and it was going to be bloated. So we knew, okay, no gym class. It was a running joke, but now looking back, it was, well, we were missing out on those physical activity minutes that we had.
Capital planning, you kind of touched on this. Capital planning in Chicago has been criticized in the past for being inequitable and not having a system that truly prioritizes which schools need the most help at the various times when repairs are needed. It's also really expensive. CPS is a junk bond status, can't borrow at cheap rates, so it's expensive to borrow money to build and repair schools. I'm curious how you would approach, as a board member who is responsible for the districts in, I'm sorry, the schools in your district, but also the schools across the city, how would you balance prioritizing schools in your district for facility repairs with needs in other districts? We'll start with Yesenia.
I think while I'm running to represent the 7th District, also, I know that whatever vote I take will be, have an impact across all schools. That being said, I think it will be a conversation with the board members. If I see in another district that is something that needs to be repaired right away, how can I support them? Because I also will expect the same for my district. And it's, I think, approaching collaboration and not trying to be fighting in, you know, one over the other, is how can we get this passed and help all our students?
Ava, how about you?
I would go with the assessments, having people who physically understand all the troubles of those buildings and be able to see, you know, what, how dire is the state and try to like, you know, work in collaboration with all the board members and kind of pretty much, you know, say, you know, which one is the one that, you know, might potentially, yes? You know, going based on that professional assessment and being able to know how high of a risk it poses to our students and staff. I think that would be the scale of my approach.
Now, I want to ask both of you, as you're out talking to voters in District 7, what do you hear as their requests of you? What do they feel like you need, that the Board of Education needs to respond to in District 7 or just in CPS in general? What do you hear as the top issue in District 7? And we'll start with Ava. We'll start with you since I think we...
One of the main issues is a lot of individuals don't even know this historic moment is happening. Trying to make sure that they understand how it's navigated and having to unfortunately break down to them that, "I'm sorry, you're a resident," or "I'm sorry, you don't have a legal status and you cannot vote in it," has been quite difficult because these are parents that do have kids in the school systems. And whatever decisions are made by voters, it will impact them directly, not indirectly. And, you know, trying to let them know that, you know, don't feel defeated, don't feel that there's nothing else that you can do, you know, empowering them. Let them know that they can still have a basis for speaking up, being very much present and speaking with other individuals that can vote and letting them know how, you know, based on the candidates that they're inclined, how that would benefit them or affect them, you know? And, you know, that has been quite disheartening because at some point, that was my family too, you know? We immigrated. My parents were not always citizens, you know? So to think that, you know, if that would have been them right now, they wouldn't have a voice for six of their kids at the time.
And just to add for anyone watching, this was something that did get discussed at the state level as the bill creating the elected school board was passed, whether or not to allow parents who are non-citizens to vote in these, specifically these school board elections. And ultimately, that didn't make it into the bill. So you're finding that you are hearing from parents who don't have an ability to vote, it sounds like, in District 7. Yesenia, how about you? What do you hear from voters?
I think if I had to narrow it down, two things. One of them is the support system, whether it be, you know, having high-quality education accessible within walking distance, but also the after-school programming for their child. The second is a trust in their representation when it comes to the elected school board since the first time that this has happened of getting an elected one. Trust that the money is not going to be misused, that we have the best interest of the community at hand.
We're getting close to wrapping up, and I did want to ask you both, I did this with the District 1 group, since you only have two, you only have one opponent, I guess, here tonight, Raquel isn't here. We did ask some folks who you would vote for if you weren't running. But since there's only two of you, I would like you to address the other candidate. Just let's assume, Yesenia, that Ava wins. What would you ask her to do, once elected to the school board? What priorities would you hope she could pick up? And then you'll have a chance to say the same to Yesenia. So let's assume Ava wins, and what advice do you give her?
I would say definitely, for me, coming from the community, it would be maintaining the community-driven, keeping in what's the impact for our students, our parents. The other one, it will be transparency of everything that is happening and why those decisions are being made, right? And accountability of being, because at the end of the day, you know, our community are the ones that are getting impacted by, whether it be a vote yes or no, or any other decisions.
And I very much agree with that. You know, that's something that, you know, the reason why I'm running, you know, aside from trying to look up for resources for, you know, implementing the SEL and, you know, my kids are pretty much the drive behind this, you know? We don't know where a lot of this stuff is going. But my question to you would be is, you know, I know you're being endorsed by the Chicago Teachers Union. How would you make sure that whatever decisions you're made are driven from Yesenia and Yesenia's experience and not by a larger corporation that's winning or seeking to win?
You can respond if you'd like, yes?
No, definitely. And, you know, for me, is that I am accountable to the voters, not just, well, actually, not just the voters, because as you mentioned, our community is a very wide, wide representation, diverse, right? Our community is beautiful. We have not just Latino, but we have a growing Asian-American population in our community. And with 50% of the student body being Latino, but many of our parents are not registered voters for various of reasons, it's how being accountable to the community, because they're the ones that either are going to be voting or at the end of the day, impacted. And that is what I have seen in my work, working with the moms, organizing with the youth, making sure that they had those programs for after-school and the Summer Institute so they had a safe space, especially in Little Village area or Pelson. So that's what it comes to me. It's making sure that I am trusted, right? And also knowing who, that they elect someone, going back, being transparent and trustworthy, that we don't have outsider billionaires trying to drive this election. And, you know, at the end of the day, they don't want me for a reason in that position. And I think that says more.
Final question. I would like you to reflect back on your own time in school. Is there a teacher or staff member from school that you still remember today? And so why? And who is that person? We'll start with Ava this time.
Oh my goodness. I was not a dorky student, but I did enjoy learning and I had a very good relationship with a lot of the teachers. There's one in particular that I remember that everybody was like, "We don't like her. She's mean." Ms. Lasagna at Armour School, 4th grade. And I loved her. She was a sweetheart. And even though I was still struggling with English and she did not know any Spanish, she was very, very supportive, very passive, just, you know, just willing to wanting to work with me. And I can, you know, I, my opinion about her is never, she was mean or strict or whatever, you know, quite the contrary.
Yesenia, how about you?
I would say I have very good positives, memories with my teachers. In particular, I think Mr. Shambak, 8th grade, Pickard School. Individual that gave the opportunity to learn how to enjoy reading nonfiction, but also provided activities, hands-on activities. He will bring in oranges so we can do juggling and explain why that was the benefit and how that impacted our brain. Do word problems and also make it an activity and fun. From his, for him in particular, I learned how to appreciate learning about history and looking at the impact that it has in our communities. So as you can tell, it brings like a bright smile on my face, thinking about, in particular, that teacher.
Well, shout out to both of those brilliant educators. And thank you both so much for being here, ladies, tonight. This is really a very good conversation, and I appreciate you taking the time to be here.
Thank you.
So again, thank you to Ava and Yesenia for joining us today, and we appreciate you taking the time to be here. Thank you for tuning in to Chalkbeat's inaugural School Board Candidate Forums to learn more about the people running in these first historic Chicago School Board elections. You can find all of our voter guides and additional resources to help you cast your vote at chalkbeat.org/Chicago. I want to thank again our partners at Block Club Chicago, WBEZ, and the Chicago Sun-Times for working with us to develop those voter guides so you could get to know these candidates. Special thanks to Tiana Van Gundy at Fuelled Events for planning and hosting these forums, and to BPM Film for video and audio production. Also thanks to the engagement team at Chalkbeat, the entire Chicago Bureau. Our managing editors are Eric Gorski and Carrie Malago. Our editor-in-chief is Sarah Darville. For Chalkbeat Chicago, I'm Becky Veeby. Thank you so much. Have a great day and happy voting.